I want to thank everybody for coming. We're going to call the meeting to order. This is the August 29th, 2024 special meeting regarding the superintendent contract. If we could all rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Treasurer, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ratliff?
Here.
Mr. Weibling?
Here.
Mrs. Dyer?
Here.
Ms. Swanger?
Present.
Mr. Guyer?
Here.
Tonight, as I've already stated, we're here to approve the superintendent's contract. Briefly, I'd like to talk about the process we went through to get our candidate and our being here tonight. Once we found out and it was confirmed that our superintendent, Ms. DeLaflora, was leaving, we immediately had our staff, Ms. Carter, Mr. Hayner, contact the ESC. First, we decided, who are we going to use? There's various companies out there. It was decided by the board to use the ESC that we belong to because it didn't cost us any money. They instantly sent Mr. Wade Lucas to head our search. The search started in our policy states that you have to have a mass, I guess, posting or acknowledgement that you have an opening for that. That's the only direction we are given in our policy, which means we could have went and hired anyone that we wanted to. At that point in time, when Mr. Lucas met with us, we started, what kind of search do you want? Do you want a long drawn out search? Do you want an expedited search? The board had chose to do an expedited search. It started with members that might, or people that we may know that might be a good fit for Marion City. Maybe somebody who has superintendent's license, might be internally or otherwise. So, the board had given him a list of names that they felt comfortable with, at least talking to initially while our posting was happening. At some point in time, we received numerous applications. I believe there were 20, 21, 21 applications that we had to go through. At that point in time, they're giving various aspects of themselves, resumes and so forth, to us, writing samples, cover letters and such. We then had to vet those and go through those. And we met to basically narrow our list down as we felt appropriate for each individual board member. Some board members had three, some had, I think the highest was seven, on who we wanted to basically talk to. At some point in time, that got narrowed again to three. So, we had three candidates that we were going to interview in a process. That process was to include an interview with the board, an interview with community stakeholders or business leaders, and our staff. So, while one member was interviewing with us, another interviewee was interviewing with our staff and another one with the community. Each board member was to invite three community members to that event. The mayor was invited, as well as the fifth ward city council member, Thaddeus Smith. There was a number of our staff members that were made up of both unions and administration in another room to interview members. After the interview process, which lasted, I think they were with each group about 45 minutes, the board met to hear feedback from the rooms we weren't in, meaning the community feedback and the staff feedback. Based on that, all of the board members were in agreement, I would say, to engage to see if we could even get a contract with Mr. Murphy, to see if that was a possibility. And that contract that we were seeking, the negotiations were led by Wade Lucas. He was helping in the negotiations, as well as he asked me to take the point as the board president. Because at that point in time, because people were saying that Mr. Murphy's my friend and my boy, at that point in time, I asked Mr. Weibling to engage and be our lead point on negotiations. Mr. Weibling, due to work conflicts, I guess, he was not comfortable because he wanted to, he didn't feel he could get back to Mr. Lucas in a timely manner due to his work obligations. At that point, I turned to Mr. Guyer, a new member of the board, who has a financial background and is on our finance committee, to ask him to engage with Mr. Lucas to lead contract negotiations. He in turn reached out for assistance with Ms. Swanger, who has negotiated several, well, we don't have to say how many, but a lot of contracts here at the city schools for MEA and so forth. And she is also the chair of finance. So, the two of them worked together to try to come up with the agreement that is before us tonight for Mr. Murphy. At this point, having said that, I'm going to turn that over to the two head negotiators, I would call them the head negotiators, negotiators of this. Mr. Guyer, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. No, it was a great process. We learned a lot throughout. We were somewhat in a crunch. We understood the school started. We needed a superintendent as soon as possible. And I think, you know, we did our due diligence in making sure that that process was all the way through. So, what it came down to was that Mr. Murphy checked all the boxes that we've been longing for in this district, okay? Longevity. Mr. Murphy's been with the Toledo Public Schools his entire educational career, starting as a substitute teacher and working his way up to deputy superintendent. Mr. Murphy has worked in the central office for 12 years now, and he wants to be in Marion and is in his career here. That was key. Knowing our community, Mr. Murphy is a 1992 graduate of Marion Harding. He grew up in Fair Park and worked at Lincoln Park Pool as a teenager. He has returned to Marion often, as he still has friends here and he still calls this place home. Moving our district forward, at Toledo, Mr. Murphy helped increase their graduation rate. He helped develop new student discipline codes to model positive behavior supports. And he helped increase student enrollment and helped retain teachers and staff. He was also instrumental in reorganizing district departments to ensure all staff were working to support the district's Focus on the Whole Child approach to the educational process. In addition, he helped bring healthcare services to their students. Operationally, Mr. Murphy has developed and implemented strategic plans. He has supported the writing and receipt of federal grants. He has analyzed the structure, processes and school systems for school systems. He has communicated and worked with school board members. And he also works alongside the Ohio School Boards Association and has presented at many of their conferences. Finally, Mr. Murphy wants to be in Marion. He has quoted in his high school yearbook quiver, saying that his teammates make him better. Brian understands the value of working with the team. He knows that education demands a team effort, from secretaries to bus drivers to cooks, custodians, aides, teachers and administrators. Mr. Murphy understands that he is simply one position within this organization and his goal is to develop the best team for the benefit of students and all staff members of the Marion City Schools. So, please, in the night of celebration, help me welcome Mr. Murphy back to Marion, back to our school community and back home.
Ms. Swanger.
So, as we get ready to vote on Mr. Murphy, one of the things that always comes up is what is the contract? And so, yes, from the days of Dr. Thede, I have negotiated contracts with Marion City Schools. That is, that's a lot of them, okay? One of the things I said, I want to be 100% transparent. And I know there are times where people are talking about the fact that we are not transparent. So, I, doing my homework, have created a sheet and I will share this sheet with anybody who would like to have a copy of it to show that we are being 100% transparent. So, when we negotiate a contract, there is always salary. That is the first big issue. Then, there is also the pickup of STRS, which is our retirement program. There is Medicare that gets averaged in. And then, in Marion City Schools, for, from the days of at least Dr. Barber on, we have done longevity into that. There is always an annuity that is included. There may or may not be tuition reimbursement that is put in there. There is some type of travel and cellphone expenses. So, all of those we have had with superintendents since Dr. Barber. And that's as far back as I went with asking for contracts. So, what I did was I took Dr. Barber's information and then I took it out to the year 2025, giving a 3% raise every year all the way through to 2025. When I did it, I was conservative on my estimates because I did not increase longevity at all. I did not increase the annuity at all based on a contract. So, that's a conservative estimate. I did the same thing for Dr. Iarussi and I did the same thing for Ms. DeLaflora. And then, at the end of that, I put Mr. Murphy's package on here. So, when we are talking about salary and package, we are well within the limits of what Marion City Schools would have paid for Dr. Barber or for Dr. Iarussi. So, again, I will share this information with anybody who would like to see it just so that we can be 100% transparent. So, at the end of this, if you want one, come see me.
Thank you, Ms. Swanger. And I would just add that there was times in this negotiation process where the ESC was asking us, we understood what Mr. Murphy made in Toledo. That was part of everything. And it was brought to our attention, can you guys get to his number that would bring him here or something that he would entertain? It was brought to the board's attention. We agreed that we could. And he was not thrown into that mix until we kind of knew that we could get to those numbers, if need be. So, that was what was done by the ESC. Also, I think in this process, Mr. Lucas also ran some numbers and ideas by, I guess it would be the treasurers that work at the ESC. And they kind of told him, kind of, this is okay to do. Mr. Murphy's package, if you will, only puts us in about the middle portion, these numbers are from the ESC, of our ESC. So, we're not at some top end number. We're still in the middle, about the 14, 15 range of 30, 32 schools, I think, on what our package is for our superintendent. Obviously, when the superintendents rotate through, meaning his is a new deal, when they get a new deal, it's going to be better than his. So, we're going to be back towards the bottom of that end. And I'm not telling Mr. Murphy that, so he asks for more money. I'm just saying that's how that goes, okay?
Sorry to hear.
And we know as well, because it was brought to our attention, that the superintendents in this district has been plagued with it by more than anyone. The superintendent's average staying time at a district is 1.7 years because they can go to another district and demand higher numbers. They can keep moving up to get bigger and bigger salaries. And I also don't have to tell you at your house or in the economy right now, goods and services have went up tremendously. That is the same way in administrative costs throughout the state of Ohio, okay? Anybody have anything to add on the process or anything like that? Okay, I will make the motion to approve the superintendent's contract that I received on Monday with his signature.
I will second that.
Any discussion?
Glad I could make it. Hung up with work in Columbus. Almost didn't make it here. I'm wholeheartedly behind Brian Murphy, this candidate, and where we're heading. I think getting this district back to where we were and then beyond. And gladly turn over the keys and very much looking forward to where we're going right now, so. And everything that Mr. Guyer said earlier about checking all the boxes, that couldn't agree more, so, thank you.
And I will add, there's one part of the contract that says, will the superintendent live within Marion City Schools? I also did some research on that and found out that it's actually illegal to require somebody to live in Marion City Schools. That was a 2009 Ohio Supreme Court case, Lima versus the state of Ohio. And so, they said you cannot mandate that a person live within your school district. And that's true for schools and government, other government officials. There is, if you look at Ohio Revised Code 3319.01, there is an emergency or disaster clause. And I don't think we fall into the emergency or disaster clause. We have asked Mr. Murphy to live within Marion County. And we know that there's more housing available in Marion County than there is in the school district of Marion. So, I just wanted that to be out there, also being transparent.
So, obviously, there's not any public comment?
There is not.
Okay, because I thought, is there a reason why the public can't speak or?
Well, normally in these meetings, we don't have a public comment section for the approval of contracts.
Okay, I thought, special meetings, we did allow public to speak. So, anyways, for me, I think I emailed you on Monday and I told you that I would be voting no this evening for various reasons. And I understand the, how you extrapolated out the various superintendents and their salaries. But I think in each one of those cases, like with DeLaflora or Barber, they would at least have been on the campus for a certain amount of time. I know Mr. Barber, as well as Mr. Iarussi would. So, when you extrapolate their intense time on the Marion City Schools campus, I think that needs to be put into consideration, so. But yeah, you've got a good chart here. My other reasons, I really don't agree with a five-year as opposed to a three-year for that reason that I just stated. I mean, I think we should have probably, and I think in one meeting, I did say that we should probably put some type of metric on that five-year. Maybe some metric that's associated with the school grade card. Our attendance is crazy. Something in which is a measurable metric in which we can then do some type of incentive bonus. The other reason, I have five particular reasons. And I don't think, when they were meeting, the community and the staff, and I did ask Mr. Lucas, Mr. Murphy did not disclose some important information, i.e. his relationship with you, as well as some things that may cause people pause. So, you know, I mean, and we're paying him, what, $27,000 more than we paid Olympia? And, you know, $12,000 we're giving him for, and it's on Ms. Swanger's chart, for cellphone travel ETC. And so, that means like if he doesn't use all that money, we just write him a check. So, let's say he only used like $50, so we would write him a check. And I think that's mentioned within the contract, as well as a $12,000 moving expense. And your longevity information, you know, we're going to give him, if he stays X amount for a couple of years and then X amount for the next. So, we'll give him, I think in the contract, it says like $10,000 over the course of his employment within the Marion City Schools. So, this is a very sweet contract. And as far as what you said about living in the county, no, we cannot mandate it that, I know it's against the law, but obviously, you know, we can put it out there that we, in our talks and our discussions with him, we want him to be able to vote on levies within our district. We want him to be able to understand and know what's going on within the Marion City Schools district. So, I will be voting no. And I do apologize because I did say initially that I wanted to have a 5-0 vote of confidence for Mr. Murphy. I do believe that we set Ms. DeLaflora up for failure with the 3-2 vote when she first came. And I didn't want us to start off this tenure with that cloud hanging over our new leadership. But looking at this contract and for the reasons that I stated, I will be voting no tonight.
Just a couple of comments. For a year and a half, you have attacked me and Mr. Weibling for voting no against the last superintendent. As you stated, I'm glad you're holding your hat and tipping it and saying that you're going to do the same thing. But we have, me and Mr. Weibling has caught tremendous amount of heat from you and other board members at the time because we voted no on someone, not because I didn't want a five-year deal. It was because she was not qualified versus the other applicants we got. Two of them, which my final two, were Marion Harding graduates, okay? So, they're Marion Harding graduates. So, we voted no, or at least I did, for a lack of qualifications, okay? Then, you have brought up countless times that I have a relationship with Mr. Murphy. Mr. Murphy's from this town. He has a relationship for a lot of people in this room. In fact, this is not the first board to ask Mr. Murphy to come here and to be an administrator. He was asked by Coach Mack. He was asked by Coach Varnik when he was on the board. There's a lot of people that approached him before this board approached him. He was a name that I gave in the last superintendent search, but he turned us down because his kid was a junior in high school at the time. So, his name was brought by me at the last superintendent search, brought by me at this, this time around. I'm not going to apologize because I have a relationship with him and his family. I have a relationship with a lot of families. At this point in time, we probably see each other twice a year at this stage of our lives. So, the fact that you keep trying to say that, you can keep saying it, I do have a relationship with him. It's why I did not negotiate the contract. And this entire time, you've been a yes until it appears that someone told you to vote no. Yesterday, you went on the radio to bash me, his contract, and did it to try to rile up people and complicate things here with this board. In fact, you asked him to come out to make, speaking against his contract. So, you're undermining the process that this board has taken.
That's not correct.
And just to let the public know, it has came to this board's attention and in particular, the president of this board's attention, that potentially, we're going to have to engage legal because there's members of this community that are totally undermining this board. We are potentially having executive meetings, confidentiality in those, and confidentiality in our contracts being undermined by certain people in this community. In particular, former board member Kelly McKay and former president of this board, Kelly McKay. We know in negotiations with Mr. Murphy, that she reached out to Toledo to try to circumvent our processes and we have the evidence of such. So, we now had to, and they had to, as our negotiators, take a district with a value of $55 million and try to negotiate with a man who Toledo wanted to keep him for $655 million as their budget, okay? So, for him to come home, he is leaving about $325,000 on the table in Toledo to come home, okay? So, this man is putting his family in this community and buying a house, which our last superintendent did it and previous ones didn't. He is bringing his wife, his daughter and his entire family here, which the last superintendents we've had haven't, okay?
So, Olympia did not live in the district?
Her whole family did not live in the district, no.
Well, they were a blended family, so.
I'm just telling you what he's.
But I'm just saying, you know, and in voting no, I knew you would attack me. So, here's the deal. Here's the deal. For you to say Olympia DeLaflora wasn't qualified, to me, is a misnomer because we know she is more than qualified to do the job. But that's, we differ on those opinions.
Yeah, it's an opinion.
But, you know, the other thing is, Mr. Spears is here today. And we can play the tape. I in no way encourage people to come and usurp this process. In no way did I say it. I said people should partake in a democratic process. This is a democratic process where people need to know what's going on in the district, okay? The other thing that, Kelly McKay, my name is Tara Dyer. I'm not Kelly McKay. So, if you got, I'm glad you reached out to legal for something, you know? I mean, to me, you know, because I asked you, did you vet legal for the contract? And I asked you, did you vet our treasurer? I did not know you, but you vetted ESC treasurers. I don't know how involved our treasurer was in this process. I don't know if we can afford this, this contract. Well, now, when we sign the contract, we're going to have to.
So, Ms. Dyer, I can tell you for a fact that we did work with our treasurer. We did work with Wade Lucas from the ESC, so we were well.
But our treasurer and I, you know, our treasurer, I said, well, she said, I am putting in the numbers that the board said. That's what she told me. She said, so when you say work, she put in the numbers that you guys told her to put in?
You do understand this is a board decision, not the treasurer's decision.
This is 100% the Board of Education's decision.
I'm saying the treasurer should be involved in every aspect that deals with money, every aspect.
But she doesn't get a say. We just tell her the number she puts them in.
She doesn't get a say, but she gets a recommendation as to how.
She does not.
Okay. Anyways, anyways, for me, the, this whole thing, the other thing I forgot to mention too was, I don't know how, well, I'm not going to mention that. For me, this thing stinks. And I'm going to do my job. I will work with Mr. Murphy and because the people elected me to be on the school board. And I hope, now that you've got the candidate that you want, we can go back to doing what's best for kids because right now, the adults are taking all the oxygen out of the, out of the room. And I don't know in the last meetings or whatever, if we've ever talked about, you know, doing good things for kids. So, I'm ready. I just told you, I emailed you and told you I was going to vote no.
I understand that.
Okay, so, you know, I mean, what's, what's the big deal?
Let's vote. One thing I want to add in terms of doing things for kids.
I told you I'd vote no.
Oops.
Okay.
The first time I ever met Brian Murphy was when we were introduced to Carrie Sarabia, who is the president of RFS Behavior in terms of the mental health for our students. And as many of us being former teachers, we know that we are not qualified. We are not certified to deal with many of the mental health issues that our students are bringing to the classroom, from home, whatever the case might be. That was, to me, and then you hear the mentions of Whole Child, which was a phrase, to be honest with you, that took me a while to get used to. But that was my introduction. And I think Brian and I may have said hi, exchanged names, and then it was more talking to Carrie. I have no doubt, especially with him being from this community, and to recommend to this district, when he didn't have to, hey, RFS Behavior is fantastic. And that is something that we have all agreed upon. And he was one of the drivers behind that. So, if there are any reservations or any doubts as to his desire or his ability to affect the daily lives of our students and the entire family throughout the entire year, not just the school year, but the whole year, again, I'm willing to put my name on it gladly, proudly, with no reservations whatsoever.
We're paying him enough, so I hope you're.
I agree. Let's vote. I'm looking forward to it.
And I don't think the staff, you know, did we get a lot of input from the staff? I mean, I had to.
We had, we had input from the staff. They gave us input. They get to give us input. That doesn't mean it's their choice. So, the fact that you want to make it everybody else's choice, and you can smirk and smile all you want, your lady quit on us. She left. She's up in Cleveland. We're bringing a guy home. That's the bottom line.
Why did she quit, Rocky?
Let's go. Let's vote.
Call the roll, please.
Why did she quit?
Call the roll.
Why did she quit, Rocky? So, that's a whole different story.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weibling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
No.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Murphy, welcome home. You have the floor, sir, if you want to say anything at this point or personal matter.
Good evening. I'm a proud graduate, Marion Harding High School, class of 1992. I don't think you heard me. I'm a proud graduate of Marion Harding High School, class of 1992. Before we start, I'd like to introduce my wife. My daughter Lexi. My daughter, Lexie. My son is a collegiate athlete, he is in season, so he couldn't make it here tonight. He sends his regards, so. So thanks for having me, I appreciate the board, I appreciate the support from four to five board members. I would tell you, I didn't think that I would be here three weeks ago, even a month ago, that, you know, we, my wife and I, over the years, have been called several times to have the opportunity to come back to Marion, and it just wasn't good timing. Toledo has always been good to me. I was a core of three guys that took over the district when I was around 36-years-old. We were handed the keys to the kingdom, had to cut $50 million from the budget, and we had to create a plan to build the district. I would tell you that during that process, we got national notoriety for the changes that we made. We were able to have a lot of success. Over the years, my wife will tell you, we've been offered a lot of superintendent jobs, and we've turned them down. I would tell you, three weeks ago, this job just kept tugging at my heart. And I'm taking a pay cut to come here, because I wanna be here. So it, it's okay that, you know, it's not a 5-0 vote, because I'll tell you, once we're here, come September 16th, and I step into the job, and you see me in the community, and you see me in the schools, and you see me building relationships, and then we talk in a year, in two years, in three years, and you start seeing the performance of this district go through the roof, I wanna sit down with that fifth board member that didn't vote for me today. We will achieve in this district. I went to the football game Friday night, knowing that it was a possibility that this district and this board may support me tonight. And the love and the feeling that I had when I walked in after leaving here 32-years ago never left. I met three people that grew up on Martinique Drive, 1217, is where I grew up, single mom, and they grew up different decades, and it was like we, it was like we saw each other just the other day. We connected right away. So many people in the community came up to me, loved me, not, and my wife as well, and welcomed us, welcomed us with open arms. And it was very satisfying, and 'cause frankly, I didn't know what I was walking into. And, you know, when you leave home at 18-years-old, you go north, I went to school at the University of Findlay, I wrestled at Findlay, kept going north because my better half kept me there. Very close to the border of that team up north that I won't say, which is very hard to be close, to be around that team up north. And I, I think if I say OH.
IO.
OH.
IO.
I know I'm home when I say that. So it, it, it just felt great to be home. It feels good to be here tonight. You know, in Toledo, being deputy superintendent, being chief staff, I've dealt with a lot of criticism. We've had a lot of cheerleaders in the community, we've had a lot of success, and, and I'm used to obstacles, it just comes with the job, it really does. So I'm glad to be here, I'm glad to be a part of this community. You will see me, you will see me, and I, and I, you know, if you see me, come up to me and talk to me. I'd be happy to talk to you about any issues, even if you have positive things about the district that you're seeing that's happening, feel free to come up and talk, don't be afraid. I love to talk to people. Friday night, the game, I probably can't count as high as the number of people that came up to me and introduced themselves, had great conversation, learned a lot about the district, heard a lot of positive things about the district. You know, I think there's a lot of negative things happening over the last few years, and, you know, when you have four, you know, different superintendents in five years, that makes it challenging. And there's a lot of other obstacles I think we can address. And so, I'm very happy to be here, very happy to be part of this community. My wife is the one that gave me the nod to say we could do this, it wasn't me, so I give her full credit. She's from Toledo, she's never left Toledo. We live in, in Mommy, just outside of Toledo, she went to Roy C. Start High School, my daughter went to St. Ursula Academy, and, and my son went to Anthony Wayne High School in there. So, so this is a big move for her. She supported me from the very beginning, when this got real. And again, I didn't think we'd be here today, but I am, even though I didn't get a 5-0 vote, it's 4-1, I certainly believe that as time goes, when this community, kids, parents, they see the momentum build, block by block, they will not be disappointed. We will succeed. This district, just being at that game Friday, to see the foundation of the people that live here that still care, the people, the teachers that are from Marion, the, just the parents, the community, people that I haven't seen in 30-years, still coming around to support kids, wow, it was a great feeling. The foundation is there. So there's opportunity for success, and we're gonna build upon that success, and I look forward to doing it. Very collaborative, it takes an effort, it takes a village, it takes more than a school district, it takes partners, there's partners in this room that have come here to support me, that I've worked with in Toledo, and some of those partners I wanna bring with me, because we've had a lot of success in Toledo using those partners. So again, I'm Marion City Schools' proud, proud graduate, class of 1992, Marion Harding High School, happy to be here, and I will see you September 16th, we'll start. Buckle your seatbelt, because change is coming. Thank you.
I, I, we have some cake back there, stick around, I think Mr. Murphy, his wife, and daughter are gonna be around for a little bit. So if anybody wants to talk to him, feel free to go talk to the family, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Thank you.